Good afternoon, everyone. This is Commissioner Pint and this is the Scott WMO Watership Plan Commission Meeting for July 26, 2021. It's 4:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to refer to the agenda and the minutes, agenda for this meeting and the minutes for the last meeting. And please take a look and see if there's any comments. If not, we entertain a motion to begin and to approve the agenda and minutes. Materials were sent out ahead of time, so I hope everyone had a chance to look at them. If I don't hear of any more comments on either the agenda or the meeting minutes from last meeting, I'd entertain a motion to approve all.
Commissioner Verling, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting.
Is there a second to the meeting?
This is Commissioner Casilius South, second.
A roll call, please.
Absolutely. Commissioner Pitt?
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
Commissioner Verling?
Hi.
Commissioner Shay?
Hi.
And Commissioner Phil? Commissioner Phil is reconnecting.
Yeah, I have a lot of connection issues myself and hearing I might try and it keeps up. I'll probably try and bug out and then try and go in on the phone or something. It's we're going to start doing these meetings in person anytime soon?
Um, we can certainly discuss it. We don't have a meeting room available because the boardroom at the county right now is under construction. So we've like the council has been kind of or the commission has been kind of leapfrogging to different locations. We may try doing like an optional hybrid meeting if the commissioners would like to do that, where you can either attend in person or virtually. We could certainly entertain that if that would be helpful.
Okay. That motion has then passed as unanimous. Is that correct?
Well, we do not have Commissioner Phil. However, you do have quorum.
Then I move that the action item is approved. Public comment is next. We I don't have anything in our agenda here for public comments. So we'll move on then to our staff reports and I'd like to have everybody review the SWCD report which was included in your packet. And if somebody from SWCD wants to make any comment, we'd welcome it at this time.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioners. This is Troy from Scottsdale Water. So I'll just review some highlights from the report and then stand by for any questions. The number of active cost share requests is hovering around that same mark now for the last six months or so, just above 200, 210. About half of those are projects that are in the WMO that are in very states of planning or payment or construction. So we maintain a pretty decent sized workload. So helping cover crops, we continue with the strategic plan as always. One of the things we're doing is marketing funds. We have to promote advancing the cover crop adoption using Clean Water Fund grants for incentives. We're planning some workshops coming up here in early 2022. And the continuous as landlords who have questions about incorporating cover crops into their production plans. Clean Water Education Program. We got a chloride banner now. We'll have to show that to you at some point in time, but it's a pretty cool banner about salt use and appropriate salt use. We can use it at different community events, fairs, things like that. We had a Stabilize Your Shoreline Workshop that was back in June. So since we're recording or reporting from previous month, that's why it's showing up now. We sent out 770 postcards of landowners promoting various funds available through the Clean Water Fund for different projects. Those are targeted and prioritized projects per the grant. So what we're doing is really amping up our outreach and promotion of these funds to get more interest in utilizing the crusher that we do have available. Well, let's see what's moving on here. Inventory assessment, we didn't do any activity, but we're still in the midst of completing the Roberts Creek Subwatershed Assessment. So John should have that report wrapped up pretty soon here. Buffer law, I'll move down to that. So we completed our annual inspections for the western one-third. That's the Belle Plaine, Blakely, Sand Creek, St. Lawrence, Helena Township areas. Well, we didn't complete it, but we initiated it. And what we're doing with the buffer law is we're mainly focused on using aerial photography. And if we don't have recent aerial photography, what we'll do is we'll just postpone those reviews until the following year. The alternative to that is calling up all the landowners who who we can't visually inspect from the road and ask if we can encroach on their property to review the their buffers, but that's not the practical alternative. We'd rather just wait till the following year or soon thereafter when aerial photography is available and just use that method to determine compliance. We we got that cleared from Bowser. They're they're supporting of that approach. But I would say 90% of the buffers were able to assess either from the road or using aerial photography. No major concerns at this time. Water quality, continue to do our our biweekly sampling at Roberts Creek and Pika. Groundwater well, we completed our quarterly downloads from the DNR obwells. Precipitation chart there shows the dramatic decline in precipitation compared to normal for the month of June. July will come in just as bad or worse. And so we'll stay tuned for that. Construction site erosion control, you can see the numbers are high this time of year. It would be typical. A lot of plan reviews coming in. So there's a lot of, you know, billing going on yet. So we stay busy in that. Another indicator of how things are speeding up or continuing is the Wetland Conservation Act. And there you can see a lot of TEP meetings. Those are we're looking at a boundary type delineations and and proposed plans for development as they may impact wetlands. So that continues pretty significant. Helena Wetland Bank, just quick update on that. We had Bolton and Mick, Mank, who we hire as a contractor to do our annual monitoring. And they basically look at the site, determine how well our prairie and vegetation restoration plans are going and identify how many, how much we have in terms of pressure from invasive species. As you can see, the number in there, we're around 9%, which is fairly good for given the short term of the restoration at this point. Most of that is is cattails. And so we were actually out at the site. We did. We did some mowing and spraying. And now we're going to tackle the cattails out there. Equipment rental programs, skip down to that, you'll see. So we have two planting seasons, right? Spring and early summer and then fall. So the the first half of the year is done where we hit, we exceeded over 1,000 acres. So it looks like we're on track to be on par at least with previous years in terms of total equipment usage. Most of that is no till and cover crops. And we'll go down one more for the table of payments and new caution contracts. So you see, we had about a good dozen, a half a dozen or more payments per toll of 25,000. These are all projects within the WMO. A fairly unique number there is that we had no new applications in July. The main reason for that is we've been doing more batching of applications and then we review them more on a periodic basis. So we'll see a bigger chunk or slug of applications come through in August and September. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions if the commission has.
Troy, can you remind me when the Helena Wetland Bank will be available for credits for development or if it is?
Yeah, so I'd be glad to answer that. We already had a release of credits from the site. It was 15% of the total available credits. So I want to say we had about eight, give or take credits total released due to our partnership with Bowser. They collected half of them and then we collected the other half. However, those are with the, I guess, the reserve is the best way to put it, the reserve for the highway department. So they can use highway projects. So now the highway department's sitting on about four credits.
I'm just obviously thinking about with the level of development, which is high, as you can tell by all of the Wetland Conservation Act applications. And obviously, the credits that they're buying for mitigation are still within our service area, but outside of our watershed. So it's not really helping our resources, kind of what that would look like long term to be available because you can obviously make developers purchase credits within your watershed if if they're available. So
Correct, correct. Yeah, we look forward to that. So we probably want to talk to highway departments, see how many credits they're actually going to use within the next year or two. And if they're not, we can make those available to purchase on the market for the situation you're describing. Absolutely.
It's nice. Most people don't have that choice. So.
Okay, thank you, Troy, for the information and the details. Next item then would be the Vanessa's report from the SWMO.
Thank you, Commissioner Pint and Commissioners. Several several different little updates for today. A couple of them Ryan and Melissa will cover as well. So I'll probably just leave those ones. But, you know, one of the, one of the the bigger things that's been coming through this year is the impact on the high heat and lack of rainfall on our lakes. It's obviously the inverse of what we've been experiencing over the last 10 years, where we had the 10 wet is yours on record in Minnesota history. Now we've got a drought exacerbated by high heat, which leads to evaporation. So you don't just have lack of rainfall. You also have increased evaporation exacerbating that issue. So it is a notably hard year for our lakes, especially significantly impacting our shallow lakes, right? Because they're they're just going to reflect that change more. So we're hearing a lot from our residents as most of us are in this in this business across the state. It's good that our residents are concerned about our resources. We never want it to be that they aren't. But it is a lot of what we're doing right now is just trying to respond and and talk with our residents on that issue. I think kind of the biggest message going forward is to try to convey to residents and landowners and business owners that Minnesota doesn't have a normal anymore. We're going to our normal will be extremes. So you used to have, you know, a lake being at X level, you know, for maybe 30 years, or, you know, there'd be some range within that 30 years. And you might have a couple of extremes within that, but that was kind of it. Now, the normal is those extremes. Some years are going to be extremely wet. Some years are going to be extremely dry. And that's kind of the expectation we need to try to start getting people to understand. And that's going to be the new normal. It's reasonable to be worried and upset when your lake drops two feet. But to also understand that that's that really is becoming the more normal. So what are we doing to help stabilize and build some resiliency in that? Right? So what the work that we do, providing more storage capacity on the land upstream, trying to mitigate those peak flows, those are the things that we're doing to help ease that that impact. So, you know, for example, Cedar is is having a hard time this year, not for lack of effort by anybody, but just by the lower lake levels, again, the increase in pearly leaf pond weed and and the higher use, right? Thol is also obviously struggling for a similar reason. It's another shallow lake at the bottom of a drainage area. It, we did just survey the outlet for Thol. It's always good to check those outlets. It was not the obviously original outlet for that lake, but there was a culvert. And that culvert elevation was surveyed by our by our surveyors just on the 16th of July. The culvert itself is the same that it has been since the 79 and 1983 elevation at 944.1. But uniquely for Thol is actually the runout elevation, which is, I apologize, it's the runout elevation at 944.1. That runout elevation is actually what sets the outlet elevation or the OHW for that lake. That's the first one for me. I'll be honest. Normally, it's the culvert. And I had forgotten it does in fact happen this way. I'm used to the seeing this for stormwater. So usually you don't see a culvert lower than an OHW, but historically, the DNR did do that. And in fact, the DNR did do that for Thol. So it's actually the runout elevation, which is just downstream of the culvert, which sets the elevation. So we did verify it is still consistent with 1979, 1983. It's right there, though. It's not any higher. So that lake is is where it's going to be until it gets more drainage. So I mean, those are just two examples of of where our lakes are at. On one hand, on the other hand, McMahon, while we still have not gotten our contract from the DNR, we did reach out to them because I'd heard from other watersheds that they had gotten their contracts. So Melissa did reach out. DNR is allowing us to start beginning work on that project. They're going to backdate our contract simply because they acknowledge that there's been a lot of delay on their hands just due to politics and legislative delays and whatnot. So that's nice. So Melissa's already starting work on that. There'll be more on that to come. So that's kind of a heavy lift for all of the things that we're doing for our lakes. A lot of it in response, obviously, to our current weather patterns and just things that we're doing to be more resilient. Another larger issue that has been brought to my attention has to do with watershed based implementation funding. Now, this is, if you remember, like $850,000 our county area gets for the Clean Water Land and Legacy Funds. It's it's our largest substantial piece of funding we can use to install capital projects in the watershed from the Board of Water and Soil Resources. Um, the overall question from the Board of Water and Soil Resources was just getting some feedback on how to continue moving forward with kind of this new watershed based implementation funding program. Well, interestingly enough, the Minnesota Association of Watershed Districts, known as Maude, submitted a comment letter to the Board of Water and Soil Resources requesting that the Board of Water and Soil Resources change how the program is. Their comments were basically that only a watershed district or a WMO should receive funds. And also only watershed districts and WMOs that are wholly within the seven county metro area and are not participating in a one watershed, one plan, planning area should be funded. Any of those agencies that are participating in a one watershed, one plan plan would be excluded from watershed based implementation funding based on their recommendation. It's probably one of the first times in my career I have felt that it is rather important to reach out to a state agency and respond with a perspective that is contradictory. What we have accomplished with watershed based implementation funding is is very is very balanced. It's very equal. It provides us more opportunities with having to do less administrative work. We do not necessarily need to be the ones holding the purse strings in order to receive funding. So for example, the water conservation district can receive a grant directly if if we we ask for it to be that way and pass through the funds that way. It does not do us any good in this area to improve our water resources. It's not a benefit to our taxpayers, not a benefit to our resources to add an administrative layer just to have WMO approval. We're still getting the water quality benefits here. So that's kind of one of my responses. I think it's that perspective kind of goes contradictory to the efforts of working together. Now, that being said, we work together very well here. So my perspective, Lower Minnesota River Watershed District's perspective, I talked with Joni at Pirate Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District, we all kind of have a similar perspective that, you know, it was generally working pretty darn well for us here. We are all very concerned with Maude recommending that anybody who is participating in one watershed, one plan be excluded from metro watershed based implementation funding. That would take us out of being eligible for that $850,000 and only make us eligible for that $250,000 as part of our one watershed, one plan, planning effort. So for those of you who remember that $250,000 was also primarily to go to La Seward Rice Counties, who are in the upstream areas of Sand Creek and don't have any source of funding for Clean Water Fund to do projects. That saves us a lot of money downstream if we can help get more funds there and help guide what we want them to target, right? So there's a lot of benefits to participating in a watershed one plan. That's a rather significant issue. I believe it's a little bit kind of hypocritical to the way that they have written it. From their perspective, they say only those who follow a watershed based boundary should be funded. And yet they draw a political boundary, which is the seven county metro area, right? You can't have your cake and eat it too. It's got to be one or the other. They say our plans would be eligible here at the local level to receive watershed based implementation funding. But then at the same time, by excluding us from the watershed based implementation funding, our, as the WMO Watershed Management Plan would have no access to funding, neither through one watershed, one plan, or through watershed based implementation funding. Basically, it's it's at the end of the day, it's an opportunity for them to eliminate several agencies from accessing watershed based implementation funding for the metro. So it would eliminate 13 agencies from access to watershed based implementation funding, meaning the $5 million that the metro was getting would only be accessed by about 17 agencies. So it's pretty blatant what it is. It's a bit disappointing, but I will have to write a little bit of a dissenting opinion on this one because it is significant enough of an issue that other perspectives do need to be heard. Now, that being said, while Maude does carry a lot of weight, they don't represent everybody. They represent only about three WMOs. Most of them are watershed districts. They only represent about two thirds of the watershed districts, certainly not all of them in the state. That, again, was brought to my attention by Linda Loomis at the Lower Minnesota Watershed District, and she will also be writing a letter as well. So I just wanted you folks to know about that simply because I need to submit that letter before our next meeting. So I'll have that available for folks to see after that. And then that kind of summarizes kind of the the larger work. The next month, though, we will be bringing the proposed levy to the WPC for 2022. At this point in time, we'll probably be following what's already identified at our comp plan of 3%. It would still be consistent and will meet our needs. I don't see the need to go far above it. I don't think we'll be able to meet our match requirements for our existing grants if we go below it. So I think we're going to just stick with those identified and approved targets. So at this time, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Vanessa. Commissioners, any questions to direct towards Vanessa? Hearing none. I'd like just to thank you then for your input today. Going on to the ongoing business, maybe some project updates from Ryan. Are you next?
Derek, Commissioners, good evening. So just a few updates, not a lot this evening. But our EPA grant that we've been discussing more recently here for the last few meetings, this is the one from 2016, is coming to an end. So by the time we meet in August, we should really have all the financials wrapped up. The the actual deadline is August 31st. But we're in the process of putting together our last bit of reporting for it, ensuring that we're spending all the remaining funds that the grant still has remaining. And then, you know, submitting all that to our representative. So I just wanted to give you an update. Everything looks pretty good on that. It was a fairly larger grant. It was north of 500,000. So it'll feel good having that one done as well. That was kind of the one that was linked with the targeted grant. So a lot of good projects came out of that. We exceeded the environmental benefit goals that we had indicated in our application. So all that looks very positive. Next item. So as Troy had mentioned during his SWCD update, we do rank and batch a lot of our cost share projects now. And so you're aware that we are about the halfway point with those projects. And we met last week with SWCD and discussed the reenrollments predominantly and had to actually carry over our our meeting to tomorrow. So, you know, we're, we've got quite a bit of different cost share sources that we can utilize funds from. You'll probably see these reenrollments here at one of the upcoming meetings. So we didn't have a lot of interest. I believe it was either four or five projects that we reviewed in roughly about half the funds that we had set aside. So there'll be more to come on that. But also, we we mentioned that if we didn't use all the funds that were set aside for reenrollments, we would open those up to other projects before the end of the year. So we'll probably wait one more meeting, give any landowners the chance if they do want to apply to see if, see if they qualify. And then if not, we'll switch over the rest of those funds and utilize them towards other projects. Last item is, just so you're aware, we are starting our conversations on the 2021 WMO and SWCD tour. So we generally have that tour in September. And so that's what we're looking at as well as far as the date. So we're hoping it'll be around the same timeframe as the WPC meeting. So one thing to keep in mind, we do have the Scott WMO Board, who is one and the same as the Scott County Board. And sometimes there's other obligations that they might have where, you know, a number of them could be attending a certain meeting. So we're checking their schedules, just kind of seeing what's a good date. And then we will send that out as soon as possible with, and once you kind of finalize more of the details of where we're going, what we're doing, and what we're looking at, we'll, we'll let you know. So there'll probably be more details at the August meeting. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions from Commissioners? Hearing none, Ben, let's maybe move on to the program updates by Melissa. Before Melissa starts, by the way, Ryan, I don't think we're getting any updates. We're still looking at just the project details from one of our projects on screen here. There we go. Thank you.
Ryan, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so I've got a few things to talk about. The first one, I'll start with watercraft inspections. The picture that you're seeing is when I came back from the Fourth of July holiday, I received an email from Waterfront Restorations, who is our watercraft inspection vendor. And they had sent an email saying that on July 4th, when a watercraft owner arrived at the launch at Cedar Lake, the main big access, their boat had vegetation on it, which in this picture is Eurasian water milfoil and attached, and it was attached to their trailer. When the inspector took a closer When the inspector took a closer look, you can see on this picture that there's also zebra muzzles attached to that. Um, so the plants with zebra muzzles attached to them were removable by hand, but. Uh, an AIS violation did occur because that watercraft was traveling on Minnesota roadways. And there is a state law saying that that's that's illegal. Um, so when they arrived at the new water body with that vegetation and animals present, that was a violation of Minnesota state law. Um, so the inspector did what she was supposed to do. She went through her whole. Inspection, she took pictures of the boat registration, the what she found. And gave a write-up of um the whole incident. Um, she did indicate that that boater. Didn't really seem concerned that they arrived that way. Um, but we were lucky that the inspector was there and caught that so that they did not. You know, get released into Cedar Lake. I did forward the information to our um county sheriff's department. Um, and the information was forwarded to the DNR Conservation Officer. Um, our sheriff's department did follow up with an investigation. And I just recently heard back from him. So Officer uh Max Cass, who's the new recreational safety deputy. Um, did go talk with the suspect um in length, he said, at his house about the violation and the the suspect was very apologetic. And he got the gravity of the situation. Um, so Officer Cass decided to leave it as a very stern warning. Um, because he believes that he'll correct the behavior. Um, but it could have been a citation. So I guess it was a learning experience at this point for that person, but um hopefully, you know. Uh, I guess we're just grateful that we caught something like that. And and each month I get a report from Watercraft uh Restorations, and so this month we have a few weekday shifts. That they've added in to kind of make up for some of the missed shifts by a uh not enough staff yet in May. So we're gonna make up some of those shifts this month. Um, and they also said that the the Cedar East or the Large Access um continues to have the greatest. Volume of cumulative boat traffic. So in June alone. Um, the inspectors caught fifty six cases of AIS plants. Identified during entering or exiting inspections, and they were all removable by hand. And they haven't had any other, you know, major issues reported, so. Um, I can stop, so I'll leave it up to now. Uh, lake vegetation surveys, all post treatment surveys are complete. Um, the DNR and us that have been all completed the post treatment survey on Cedar. On July fourteenth um and county staff. Um, just us, myself and SWCD completed the McMahon survey on July seventh. Now, this isn't in our jurisdiction, but I just wanted to let you know that last week we did receive a report that Spring Lake. In the Paraleak Spring Lake Watershed District did identify Eurasian water mill foil found in Spring Lake, which is a new. AIS for that lake. Um, so there's new signage put at their access. Uh, we do have a few lakes that already have Eurasian water mill foil. Um, but just so you're aware that. There was a new infestation nearby. Um, as Vanessa indicated earlier about the McMahon Lake Outlet Agreement, we did get the go ahead to start some work on that. So I have two meetings set up this week. Uh, one is tomorrow, I believe, for the kickoff of the um. Environmental assessment worksheet process and also a meeting to um talk about request for proposals for a design engineer. Um, I do get updates from our lake level reader on McMahon Lake and on the last reading he sent me was July twentieth. Um, the gauge is reading at nine sixty five point five seven feet. The OHW is nine sixty five point two. So the lake level has dropped dramatically. It's only about four inches now above the OHW. Compared to twenty nineteen, when it was about two and a half feet above the OHW. Um, I just finished up today, uh, display that we're gonna have at the county fair on shallow lakes, kind of what they are. Um, what is shallow lake ecology and some. Short descriptions on what shallow lake management um is, since we've had so many different. Concerned citizens about some of the shallow lakes and the issues that we've. Been experiencing this year on those. Um, the other thing is, oh, I did contact the DNR asking if they were gonna do a fish survey this year on Cedar Lake. Which will tie into something I'm gonna talk about a little bit later. Um, and they are, they do have a fish survey scheduled for next week, actually. So that's good to know to get an updated information on. Um, the fish survey and the lake with some other data that we're gonna be collecting. And lastly, I did get permission from Vanessa to order a book called um The Ecology of Shallow Lakes. It's, I've read from editorial reviews that it's kind of the Bible. Or one of the best biological textbooks on shallow lakes and all the workings of shallow lakes and different management. Techniques that have been used and different studies that are in there. So um I'm excited to read that. And maybe get a little bit more um more understanding on how to manage some of our shallow lakes. And that information can inform us for the next watershed plan update in the next couple of years, so. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Melissa. Questions or follow up for Melissa?
This is Commissioner Casilius. I do have two comments, and this is not new news for Melissa, trust me. Um, I I, you know, I think part of it on Cedar Lake, for example, I mean, it is a shallow lake, and we all know that, and it's gotten more shallow over the years. But I think there's been a lot of controversy around the treat, the weed treatment plan we had this year as well, and people are very unhappy about that. I don't want to speak for anyone in general, but I think it's not just that it's shallow. Everybody gets that we haven't had any rain. My yard is a beautiful shade of tan, so I'm pretty aware we haven't had rain, but but the lake, the the weeds have have really been. A nuisance. So I I think that's another issue that we eh we hear about on, because I'm on the Cedar Lake Improvement District, and I mean, we, trust me, we've heard from. Everybody. So, you know, this isn't the place to solve that problem, but I I just wanted to toss that out there. The other thing I would say too is that with regards to the um. Zebra muscle incident, um, we did post that information on our um Facebook um page and on our website. And we had a few comments from people that were a little concerned that we allowed the person to to use the lake anyway. That on that given day, and I mean, I certainly don't expect that the people that are checking the boats to be. You know, bodyguards or police officers or anything like that, but I think it did raise that question among some of the. Lake residents to say, well, if if they were a blatant offender, why did we let them go on the lake anyway? So just toss that out there too, because that we did hear that feedback.
And and that's a good point, Commissioner Casilius, and I did ask that of um the DNR and uh watershed restorations. And Minnesota law states that as long as the AIS has been removed or could be removable by hand without having to do a power wash. That they are allowed to then launch after that, so.
I think we would support that if we can turn them away, we probably would have, but. Um, you know, we're we're at least happy that um. That program is really effective and um. I'm certainly very grateful that that inspector was doing their job and doing it well. So, but yeah, we completely. Agree, we wish we could if we had that capacity. We just don't.
Thank you very much. Also, just a follow up comment, that's Commissioner Pence uh for Melissa. It's my understanding that throughout the state of Minnesota where their drought is as severe as they are here, that the. Combination of low water levels and excessive heat. Has created an opportunity for excessive vegetation growth in many, many lakes, regardless of any kind of treatment programs. So we're kind of a victim right now of our environment um that has, we've had very little control over, so.
I I would definitely agree, Commissioner Pence, that is true. We are hearing that on many of our lakes right now. Um, Pam's right, she's taking the front end of it from the residents. Uh, and it is, it is a combination of factors. Are are the weeds um heavier this year simply because of. The environmental impacts of the weather? Absolutely. Uh, is Cedar also potentially impacted by the type of treatment that went on this year? That's also very possible. So Cedar has many different things impacting it. Well, you know, we have other lakes uh such as. Uh, Thol, right, that has just a uh just a really high volume of vegetation this year, making navigation difficult. Uh, so they're also seeing that challenge, and it is absolutely exacerbated by the weather. Because obviously, uh, on shallow lakes, uh, the lower lake level with a much larger littoral zone means your vegetation will be up more. Visible everywhere, right? You don't really have a a lot of deep pockets for the entire lake. It's here and there, it's sporadic. Uh, plus the high early heats, uh, sunlight improves growth, obviously. Um, so you're right, absolutely. Uh, it doesn't mean we're sitting by saying, well, it is what it is. It's, you know, we're trying to address it the best that we can. Um, and learn from this and move on and try to adapt management techniques for the future. Uh, so, yeah, no, definitely feeling it.
Thank, thank you for the comments, uh, Vanessa. Appreciate it very much. Um, in our packets also, we saw the Scott County Delivers document. Uh, so could you perhaps address that for us?
Uh, so for uh those of you who are familiar with these, this was my first Scott County delivers. I was, it was quite enjoyable. Uh, so this is an opportunity to present to the Commissioners. A little bit more of a special time, um, just to focus on uh where we um. Where we, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say focus again, focus our efforts for the county's uh work. So for the WMO. Um, the County Natural Resources Department and uh much of environmental health. Uh, our area of focus is clean water, uh, soil and air. You don't actually see air on here, but it it is one of them as well. So so those are some of those deliverables that um it is our responsibility to. To target and achieve those goals. So uh for that panel, it was uh our division director, Brad Davis. For those of you who are familiar with him, uh, Kate, uh, who is our manager for environmental services. And then our team here, uh, and then we were also uh very fortunate to have Megan Darley uh sit in for the SWCD. They actually had their board meeting at the same time, so Troy was unable to attend. So it's very grateful that uh Megan was able to jump in for that. Uh, basically, one of the things that you do at Scott County Delivers is you go over uh what your metrics are for the county. Uh, your deliverables, uh, we call them key performance indicators. Uh, many of you have heard those, heard of those before. Uh, thank you, Ryan, for scrolling down to what some of those look like. Uh, so every year we do update these for the county. So this is obviously in addition to our reports to the Board of Water and Soil Resources. And our annual reporting to you and the other state agencies. This is just for the county. Uh, some of this overlaps, obviously, uh, but for one of them, for example, uh, we discuss uh the water. Uh, transparency for four of our priority lakes, uh, Cedar and um. Uh, Prior Lake and O Dowd and Spring Lake. Uh, the first slide there, I always feels a little confusing because you've got four lakes with several metrics. We just actually spread them out. Uh, and obviously, as you guys know, water transparency is just one metric of water quality. Uh, but it did lead to a very interesting discussion about Cedar Lake. So eh there was actually a lot of really great conversation. I had, um, I got to learn a lot from the Commissioners as to. Uh, some good areas to focus on, uh, what their thoughts are, um, what else can we bring to them next time? Uh, going into this, what we wanted to do was kind of build off of the last time we did this, which was in twenty nineteen. And then what I really wanted to do as well was kind of highlight our capital improvement program, our CIPs and our tax projects. Uh, our our CIPs and our tax projects don't actually make it into these metrics, so they don't actually see those year to year. And yet it's seventy two to eighty some percent of our budget each year. So the bulk of our budget doesn't actually make it into the county's. Metrics that they get to see from us. So this gives us a great opportunity to to bring that back in and and show them how uh those projects kind of help. Influence these different metrics. Uh, otherwise, we don't usually get that opportunity. So uh, you know, that being said. We love what we do, so I could happily talk about water all day. You all can turn your cameras off and go home while you're at home, but turn off your cameras, walk away, and I probably keep talking, because I just love what it, we just like to do, talk about this. But um, so it was a, it was a great opportunity. Um. Uh, Commissioner Wolf was obviously there. If you had any additional thoughts on Scott County delivers, uh, any feedback. On what your perception was, that would be great. If you don't, that's okay too. Uh, I I thought it went um. Well, and and I certainly learned a lot, and it was a great opportunity, then very grateful that we had.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Vanessa. Any uh questions or clarifications that anybody would like from the Commissioners here towards Vanessa on this Scott County delivers report? I personally want to thank you for sharing that with us. I read it and I was very uh impressed with it and uh you did a terrific job. So it's one of those things where. Um, I will have printed out, obviously, and save to look at a little more, so thank you. All right, next item then is the watershed management study.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Pence. I I just wanted to give you a little bit of a a brief update on this. Obviously, I I kind of brought this to the WPC um a few months ago as to. Uh, this kind of project, I'm gonna share my screen here. So, uh, as you recall, the county, the WMO and the Paraleak Spring Lake District. In conjunction with the SoCal Water Conservation District um are looking at uh opportunities to, you know, improve efficiency. Uh, streamline permitting, um, you know, is there anything out there to help us do the work we do within the county better? When we talk about watershed management. So this is obviously a rather large project. Uh, and uh it takes a a wealth of time and and resources from some of the staff. Uh, because we really want to get in there and dig deep and really see um. You know, kind of break away some of those maybe pre-existing assumptions of what must be done, just because it's always been done that way. And see if there's a new way to do things that might improve things. Uh, there are, however, no uh preconceived outcomes again. Um, at the end of the day, we will continue to bring information to the steering committee, and they'll continue to guide this project forward. Um, there is a a now an approved project charter, which I can certainly, I will happily email to. Uh, each of you Commissioners, uh, the SoCal Water Conservation District will also has a. A page on their website, kind of to host the project. Uh, the SoCal Water Conservation District has a great website that most residents. And local leaders and decision makers have access to, and so they're kind of a great clearinghouse or central location for people who are just kind of interested in the work that we're doing. Uh, the outputs are simply, you know, white papers and um reports to the steering committee. There's not gonna be a large uh study document in the end. It will be just kind of an amalgamation of work. Uh, so again, the kind of the project management team is myself, uh, Troy from the SWCD. Uh, Johnny Geese, who is the administrator of Paraleak Spring Lake Watershed District, and Brad Davis, who's our director at the county as well. So we meet uh a little bit more frequently than the rest. Uh, we also have a technical team. And that technical team is made up from uh a technical representative from kind of each of the different types of land areas. So we have like. Uh, Jesse Carlson from the city of Savage kind of help provide perspectives from the um. More developed uh cities. Uh, we also have um. You know, someone there to represent uh some of the more township areas. We have uh someone there to, like Renee Christensen. From the more rural and southern uh cities like uh New Prague. And then we also have James Schminger, who you guys all know, obviously, uh, to kind of help represent, not just like the rural landowners, but also as having represented. On both the WPC and the SWCD, uh, he has a lot of experience in that, so uh they help. He has a lot of experience in that. So they help provide input into the work that the private management team is doing and ensure that we're kind of staying on track. But I did want you to know that we do continue to work on that. It does, you know, take a fair amount of, you know, our time as, as administrators. We try not to put too much of the work onto the staff so that they can carry the workload that they already have to do this year. We're currently working on how to disseminate our different budgets and work plans and provide a good kind of data spread of the work that we do. Although we all have budgets and accounting, we don't necessarily streamline everything. My favorite example is like the WMO puts vehicles under administration. Prior Lake, Spring Lake puts them under projects and programs. Neither is wrong, both are right. It's just two different ways agencies do things, but we have to find a way to show that apples to apples. So it, it's, it's very interesting and hopefully we get some great opportunities out of this to not just highlight the great work that we do, but see if there's any ways we can continue to improve that the work that we do overall within the county and watersheds. What I just kind of want to share with you right now is kind of one of the documents, which is a, a project schedule of kind of how we're moving along with this project, kind of shows it will take about a year. Because again, we do still have to intermix this with the work that we already are doing. And also some of these things are just, are rather time, time consuming. So right now, you know, we're working on, on identifying, you know, existing conditions. What are we doing now? What are we succeeding at? Where are the gaps? How are we going to compare apples to apples? And that's the F, that's kind of the bulk of the work that we're doing right now. And then as we complete each of these breaks, we bring them to our technical team. But then at the end, we also bring it to the steering committee. Each time we bring it to the steering committee, that's when we take feedback and allows us to move forward either in the same direction or possibly in a slightly different direction. So I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on that. There is, there are no actions for this, obviously, and no actions have been decided by the steering committee or any of the boards, although then to continue on with this work at this time. I would stand for any questions.
Mr. There's any questions for Vanessa? But thank you for the update. We're looking forward to continually finding or hearing more about the results of your management study here. So going on the new business, we have Melissa with the lake survey application.
Thank you, Commissioner Penn. I need to share my screen here. It'll just take a second to get this going. So I'm actually going to share my phone screen and show you how how we actually take the data out of the field. So I'm going to, we have an application on here called Field Maps. GIS created this for us. And when I open this up, normally I would go to Natural Resources Field Collection. And they've got all of the maps preloaded in here for me. So the PI would be the post-treatment survey. It stands for point intercept. And if it's pre-treatment or before we treat, they've labeled it pre-treatment. But I've already got, I'm going to show you Cedar here and some of the data that we actually took this month. So I'm going to go into the Cedar PI. And the different colors, so these ones on the south end would be ones that we have sampled and they have data in them. And this is what it looks like when they haven't been sampled yet. So it's easier to keep track of which ones we've been to and which ones we haven't.
Yeah. Hold on a second. I'm not seeing it yet.
Oh, shoot.
Seeing it?
There we go.
Here it goes. It's those zoom delays.
Sorry. So I'm going to go back. Normally I would go into Natural Resources Field Collection. Just show you that real quick, all those preloaded maps. But I'm going into the Cedar PI, which is where we collected in July. So now, now you can see this color shows that we've already entered data and we've been to those points. And this is what it looks like when we haven't been to the points yet. So let's see if I can make that bigger. There we go. So I'll just show you. So we drive to the point using a GPS. And this does have a GPS on it. But it helps to, especially if I have a third person in the boat, to have them hanging onto my phone to enter in the data while I'm navigating and driving the boat. So I'm just going to go to point number five because I know that we took a picture there as well. So I just touch it once we get there. And I'm going to tap on the pencil there to edit that point. And we'll scroll up and you can see it fills in the lake name and the DNR lake ID number. I can enter in the number of surveyors and their names if I want to. I guess it didn't listen in there, but the station number is already pre-entered and then we would enter in the depth. So we would touch on that and enter in the depth there. There's some data fields that requires us to enter it to keep going. So the long-term monitoring, Cedar's long-term monitoring. But if we're doing short-term monitoring on a lake for one year, or if we're just going to sample something one time, you know, so we choose which category that is. We are going to take a sample here because I can see on the depth finder that there is vegetation at the bottom. But there are times where we might just go to a point to take a secu depth. So we're going to say no sample taken. Or we might say no sample taken if I can see on the depth finder and we've already sampled a few other points at that same depth. There are no plants down there because it's too deep. And there are areas on some of the lakes that we go into where the, the margins are just so thick that we can't get back to that point. Sorry. I have to keep, keep the screen moving. Or this year, you know, there's been some areas where the water is so low that there's rocks in, in the way to get to that sampling point. So we added obstruction. And sometimes there's points that show off the map. And sometimes we can get to those points in past years and sometimes we can't. So just to fill in that data point, I, I might put sampled off grid subjective site. So we sampled that site. Let's see. So when we throw out the rake and we pull up the rake and when we look at it, so this is a subjective measurement where we look at the rake and depending on how much vegetation is on it, we say whether it's abundant, if, if there's vegetation covering way over the top of the rake and it's just banging off of it, we would call that overall rake abundant. This sampling point, there was enough vegetation that covered across the rake, but it wasn't like overflowing. So we would call that common. If there's only a few plants on it, we would call it sparse. If there's no vegetation at all, we would say vegetation not detected. And again, there's this one more field that if we don't actually take a sample, we have to fill this in as no sample. But, but this rake was common. And for this point, we do have to fill in, you know, how many taxa do we see on the rake? So we pick a number. So this one was only one taxa that we found and it was CLP or Curl-A-leaf Pondweed is what CLP stands for, or and the genus and species name is there also. And that was common, meaning that there was enough of it covering across the lake or across the rake that we could call it common rather than abundant or sparse. And sometimes, depending on the depth of that point, we would take a secu disk transparency reading and that's in meters, but we didn't do that at this point. And what I also like about this is that we have the option to take a photo so you can see, take photo at the top. So I can touch that and actually, I can actually take a photo of the rake at that point. But once we have all the information in there, we just hit submit at the top. And the information is submitted. Now, I thought at this point, we had taken a picture at that point and I was going to open that up and show you. And I don't seem to see it. Let's see if I click on that again. Well, that's a bar. I was going to show you a picture. So I'm going to show you one other thing. So you can see some of them are red. Those would be points that we stopped at just to take a secu disk transparency reading. So you can see point eighty-eight. You can see the depth there was ten and a half feet. And as I scroll down, I said no sample taken because we didn't take a sample, but the DNR did sample that point. And the next item on the agenda, I talked about the great clarity that we found on Cedar Lake in May. At this point, at that depth, last week, you can see the water clarity has really gone down. It was, it was, it wasn't even a meter that we could see down at this point at ten and a half feet. So I think that probably has a lot to do with the very warm weather, the no rain, or lower water levels. So I think this lake and all the other lakes, you know, the, the heat and the no precipitation has really affected water clarity on some of these lakes. I'm interested in to see next year on that same point, I'd like to go back and see if the clarity is any better. But so looking at this, you can see points one through fifty-five is what my boat and team collected on that day. We got to point fifty-five around ten o'clock and it really started to rain and the DNR didn't get onto the lake until nine thirty. But they have a canopy on their boat and they had rain gear that they brought along. So they actually finished the rest of these points that day in the rain. So all of the points did get sampled. But our team only got through points one through fifty-five. So so that's how that application works. And once I get home, once I get home, I, well, it's not showing in here now. Once I get home, it actually will sync. Once I hit wifi anywhere and it gets uploaded to the cloud and I can access the information on ArcGIS online. Although for some reason, I can't do that quite yet. GIS hasn't set that up for me yet. But the point is I should be able to log in online and see all this information pretty much instantaneously. But right now, GIS, there's some tool missing from it at this point from Esri, which is the company that creates the software. And so GIS has been downloading the information for me, all the data. And I give it to the DNR and then we combine the data, at least for Cedar Lake, when we do sample like together. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. That's just how this application works at this point. Hopefully by next year, I can show you how everything looks on ArcGIS online. And I should be able to make maps immediately on ArcGIS online once the tool that's, that's missing is, is ready and installed. So.
Thank you, Melissa. I might just add for commissioners to that reminding them that, you know, Melissa was doing this by hand on paper previously. I, you, you can probably figure out pretty quickly how time-consuming that is to do all of what she just did on paper and then also be taking photos. Then you have to tie your photos. If you ever take a whole lot of photos, how do you tie one random photo on your phone to a data point? And it's, it's a lot of work to then try to transfer that data into a system. Not that it's not work we're not willing to do, but it's certainly very time-consuming, which means obviously she can't be doing other good work elsewhere. So it's a significant improvement in efficiency. It also allows us, again, to hold on to our data a little bit more accurately. Because obviously you're not transferring data multiple times. And then it's also more readily available quickly for sharing with partners and agencies. So, you know, coming on board, I was familiar with a lot more agencies doing it this way. And so it's been really important to kind of bring the team to a place where they have the best tools available that can do their work as quickly as possible at what is a very minimal cost financially.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, then we'll move on to the next item and that would be the, the zoo plankton sampling request there. Melissa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for the first time since I've been working here and working at Cedar Lake, we saw the deepest water clarity that we've ever saw on Cedar Lake in May when we did the pre-treatment survey. We were able to, to get a clarity reading of four and a half meters, which is just over fourteen feet, which was unheard of in the past. So I talked at the DNR, they checked with a few other analogists and we think what happened was over the last two years in the fall, we've really had a late ice in, which leaves more time for sunlight to penetrate through the water, to reach those native plants on the water bottom and to have them continue to absorb more phosphorus out of the water column. Because normally it would be algae late in the fall, taking up the phosphorus in the water column. And just having those rooted plants in there a little bit longer, holding sediment in the bottom. They thought that might, that might have some some effect on why we were seeing kind of a clear water state early on this year. So we thought, you know, what else could be happening? So I brought up the idea to Vanessa that, you know, it'd be great if we could take a zoe plankton sample just to kind of see what's there, you know? Did this occur maybe because the zoe plankton population has increased and there's more of these little animals in the water that actually eat the algae? I'm going to share my screen again. So this is a picture of one of, a type of zoe plankton that we would be looking for. And in, in the memo, I talked about the different companies that I did contact. And I have to say that after talking with our engineering and their zoe plankton taxonomist, I just really felt that they had a really good handle on what we were looking for. They had a really good understanding of the zoe plankton in lakes and how they affect different in-like processes. And also that taxonomist has been doing zoe plankton identification for the last forty-three years. And I just, you know, that it was around the same price as Wink, which kind of just gave me a rough quote. The RMB didn't actually take the sample. They gave me a price per sample and they said, you know, they can show me how to buy the equipment and how to do it. But by the time I calculated all that out, because the equipment to take the sample itself was eight hundred dollars. And then the staff time to go out there and then to get the sample to them seemed like it would, might be around the same price. So I just felt really comfortable after talking with Barr and how many years they've been doing this. So in the memo, I, I do say that I'd like to, you know, we're looking for a recommendation to enter into a letter of understanding with our engineering to take the sample for us and to take a look at, you know, it, it would be one sample. So it's a one-time sample in the deepest part of the lake to take a look at what zoe plankton population is there. Did that possibly have a role, at least in the early spring, on the water clarity that we saw? And the interesting thing is that I mentioned earlier is that the DNR is also doing a fish survey this year on Cedar, which I think would also be good data to, to add to this and to, to maybe tell a story or a picture of what's going on in Cedar Lake this year. And they did also And they did also, I just wanted to share a few other um, pictures of what other zoe plankton look like. So there, there's some pictures that I asked a bar for, you know, can you show us what they look like underneath the microscope to, so we have a better idea and so as you can see, the genus and species names. So there's lots of different types of zoe plankton. Um, and what they actually look like underneath the microscope, which is kind of interesting. Um, that they can actually identify these things looking like this underneath the microscope, but each of them has a specific role in the lake. And so what we would get out of this is a spreadsheet with what they found. They would also identify if they found any zebra muzzle villagers or the, you know, the little baby zebra muzzle villagers in um, the sample, which would be good to know. And then just kind of a summary of what was found and um, pictures of them taking the sample and probably some kind of conclusion to that. So the price they quoted was seventeen hundred dollars, which we thought was not bad at all. And we also thought that since they would include, you know, the, the possibility of looking for zebra muzzle villagers, we can also use a little bit of our A I S prevention money towards the cost of this sampling. So just some interesting um, pictures of these things here. So I just wanted to show you that and I'm going to stop sharing. And so with that, I'll, I'll stand for any questions and, and asking for a recommendation. Um, for us to be able to enter into a lot of understanding with Bar to be able to have them take that sample to maybe tell a, a bigger picture, but what's going on this year in Cedar.
Any questions for Melissa?
So Melissa, this is I was just kind of curious again, now you said the cost for that is seventeen hundred and basically that's um, like an overview of your deal there was uh, just to see if that was kind of like what's possibly helping keep the clarity of the water on Cedar or, or make it as good as it has been this year. That's kind of what we're looking at.
That's correct, uh, Commissioner Shay. Um, so the first um, photo that I showed you of the the water fleas or cladassurans, these would be um, one type of zoe plankton that's, that, that really eat up algae. And if there's a large population of these um, in the lake, that gives us some indication that um, of what, why we could have saw, been seeing the clear water state um, in the lake in the early spring, because there's a larger population of these zoe plankton that um, ate a lot of the algae. And as we know that algae, too much algae is, is what causes the um, decrease in water clarity um, in the lakes. So having larger populations of, of these type of zoe plankton to eat up the algae helps bring the lake more to a clear water state.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Casilius. I do
First, Vanessa, um, is this a item that we can approve or is this an item that we have to recommend to the board?
Uh, good question, Commissioner Pence. Uh, technically it is an item that I can approve under our existing budget and it is consistent with our monitoring plan. But anytime we do something that is a first time, I still like to bring it to the W P C for an approval. So this is actually something you can approve. It does not need to go through board because it does not affect our plan. It is fits within our plan and it does not affect our overall budget for the year. Uh, but again, anytime it is something new, I prefer to bring it to you folks first uh, for your input.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions?
I believe Commissioner Casilius had some thoughts.
Yeah, I do have a question. So um, Melissa, I'm curious. So the clarity was pretty good. You're right. At the beginning of the year, it was really good. Now it's really not good. Um, and I'm wondering if, if the people that you were working with speak at all to what impact temperature may have on these little creatures, because with all the algae in the lake now, if they were really feeding on it, they ought to be the size of trucks. But um, you know, I'm just curious. So like if they, if they do their little study or whatever and it's later in the year, the water's really warm. Are they going to find that they don't have as many of these because they're somehow impacted by you know, the lake heating up versus early in the spring when, you know, coming off, you know, late ice or early ice or whatever the condition was.
Do you want me to take that?
If you want to start, sure. Go ahead.
Uh, so for, so those of you who don't uh, know all of my background, my background actually started in, in macrovertebrate research. So these are just kind of like small macrovertebrates. I wish I knew more about zoe plankton than I do, but uh, I at least dabble here and there. Um, so you are hitting on one important thing, Commissioner Casilius. Yes, there is a strong potential that uh, so plankton populations are a little bit lower right now than they have, are, are lower than now than they have been earlier this year. But taking a survey now is more important than skipping a survey until next year. Cause there's going to be a greater impact of total die-off over the winter than there would be during the growing season. So uh, your um, zoe plankton population is a, a little bit better picture of how the lake is doing over time. So water quality and water clarity samplings are excellent measures, but those are simply a measure of that moment. They don't really tell you exactly how a lake is doing overall, how it's weathering the storm, right? This is why we do biological monitoring. It's why we pair it with vegetation surveys, fish surveys. Uh, and what very few people think about are zoe plankton studies. Uh, your zoe plankton population probably has a greater impact on the health of your water body than frankly a vegetation uh, population. Uh, but that being said, um, at the end of the day, yes, is there a chance that you're going to have a smaller population sample size? Absolutely. Uh, is it import, is it better to wait until next year? No, we'll still get a better picture of what's going on this year than um, if we waited. And I would probably recommend doing the same thing again in the spring, but we wanted to still get out there while we still could.
And technically I was told that you can take a sample every month throughout the growing season. If you wanted to get a bigger picture of what's happening in the lake. It's just that this year we only have a little bit of money and we're going to just take one sample and maybe in the future, we can plan for more more throughout the growing season.
Thank you. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion then to approve uh, Melissa moving forward with negotiating a contract with Bar Engineering for the zoo plankton survey at Cedar Lake.
That's a mouthful, Virgil, but I will uh, say so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second Virgil, Commissioner Shay.
Can we take a roll call vote?
Absolutely, Commissioner. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Pence?
I will abstain.
Commissioner Casilius.
Knowing I'm a Cedar Lake resident, is that a problem?
No.
Then um, I, I, I say I
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
Commissioner Veerling?
Hi.
Commissioner Shay?
Hi.
Commissioner Phil?
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Pence, you've got uh, five. So you do have a quorum.
Yes, the, uh, the thank you. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I can
I'll make a motion to
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Pence?
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
Commissioner Veerling?
Hi.
Commissioner Shay?
Hi.
Commissioner Phil?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr.
And then Brian, if you could hit the end record, I'll, I'll follow up. We have Commissioner Casilius here in just a second.